And then we'll uh. We know you're ready.
Good.
Like to call the Tuesday, February eighteenth, meeting of the seaside school board directors. Quarter. We have a form, everybody could please stand up.
Legitimize to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Any, any guests, we have a sign in sheet over here. Right on the blue things, thank you so much. Okay, next is our agenda review.
Mr. Chair, we have a couple additions we would like to add to the agenda. As you can see there, it is two one one with the resignation of Sir Stowers Elementary and two one two resignation of the Sabato Elementary and please note that both of those registrations are for one school.
Recognition Board. Motion been made and second. Motion been made and second to accept the. Father. Have any questions? Well, those are, so those are to add to the, to add to the consent.
To write to the agenda with.
Yes. Those questions? I don't know.
Hi.
Thank you, Shannon, I gotta remember, wait a sec. All of those? Okay, next we have our reports, so leading for us today is the Assistance League and we have Judith Huck with us, welcome Judith.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Be back.
Judith, I'm one of the few male members of the Assistance League, so I'm very proud to have you here today.
Thank you, thank you very much, I'm really proud to have you as a member and your lovely wife and all the work she does, that's cool. Okay. Okay, so good evening Chair Taylor, members of the school board, superintendent, principals and staff. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share the work of the Assistance League of the Columbia Pacific in the Seaside School District and the counties. I'm Judith Huck, I am the Public Relations Chair for Assistance League. Joining me tonight is Teresa Turner, one of our very active members. Your board website states, students learn best if the community truly cares about education and communicates that value at every opportunity. For over sixteen years, the Assistance League has demonstrated this commitment by supporting seaside school students with new clothing, paying for activity fees and scholarships. We recognize the importance of our young people and the profound impact a quality education has on their future. We're here tonight to showcase how the Assistance League supports students in your district and explore additional ways we can work together to help students and families succeed. We see ourselves as partners in supporting the critical work your district teachers and counselors are already doing. With that partnership in mind, we'd like to share the details of our programs and ask how we can do even more for your students. So who is the Assistance League? We are a chapter of the National Assistance League with over twenty-two thousand members and about a hundred and twenty chapters across the country. Locally Assistance League has been serving Classip County and Pacific County for about eighteen years as a five oh one C three nonprofit powered by about fifty active dedicated volunteers. Our mission, transform lives and strengthen communities through philanthropic programs that directly benefit children and families, that is what we're trying to do. What do we do? We focus on hands-on involvement to make a lasting difference for children. We collaborate with the public schools to run impactful programs. The schools we work with are Seaside, Warrington, Astoria, Jewel, Napa, Nacelle, and we're just beginning to bring Ocean Beach onboard, we're super excited about that, that way we're covering Classip County and Pacific County, and that's, that's what we want to be doing. So why does it matter? The need in our area is significant. Seventeen percent of children in Classip County live below the poverty line. Sixteen percent of families with children in Classip County received food stamps. And Warrington has the highest number of homeless youth in rural Oregon. Just, just amazing. These statistics highlight the challenges many families face and the importance of the support we can provide. So is Assistance League work effective? We surveyed teachers and counselors across the district last year and we received a hundred and thirty responses, which we were super excited about. Here's what they reported about the students that we work with. Sixty percent noted improved attendance in the children that we have helped over before we helped them. And the next one, please. Sixty-four percent saw significant academic improvement. Seventy-seven percent observed better classroom behavior. Ninety-five percent saw increased student confidence. Seventy-nine percent reported higher classroom engagement. These outcomes affirm that the programs that we bring to your schools make a real difference for these students, and that's what drives us, that's what excites us to keep going and do what we can and try and grow our programs. So what are our programs, opposite Operation School Bell? Next slide, please. Operation School Bell is our largest program and we're proud to support the Seaside School District students with this program. Last year in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, fifty-nine high school students from Seaside and fifty-six middle school students each had a two hundred and fifty dollar budget to shop with us at Fred Meyer for new school clothes. One hundred and thirty-four Pacific Ridge students received a small wardrobe and new clothing like you see over on the table here. Jackets and shirts and pants and underwear and socks and everything, our intention is that they have like a week's worth of clothes. Especially the shoes. We also fund eight hundred dollars for each school's emergency clothing closet to meet immediate needs. Next slide, please. And the next one. Great, our duffel bag program, we provide duffel bags for children entering foster care or crisis situations. These bags contain essential clothing like essentials like clothing, blankets, hygiene items, comfort items, offering dignity and care during difficult transitions, these poor little guys. Next slide, please. Our school activities support. Here we help cover fees and supplies for sports, music, theater and other school activities. So far this year, some examples, we have paid for sports fees and gear, travel team fees, a trip to a Caesar Chavez Leadership Conference, a trip to Omsi for a science fair, a trip to Monet exhibit, musical instrument rentals, annual yearbooks and more, and this is for all the schools, not, not just Seaside. So each high school gets two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars a year, middle school with a thousand, elementary six hundred for these miscellaneous kind of student support. Seaside, very fortunately, has a lot left, so Seaside High School has two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars left to use this school year, so we need to know what you need or help with there. The middle school hasn't used any, so they still have a thousand and Civic Ridge haven't used any, so they have six hundred dollars to spend. So spend it. Cinderella's Closet, this program allows students to borrow formal wear for school dances, ensuring financial barriers don't prevent participation. We have about seven hundred dresses for young ladies that they can borrow to be able to go to school dances and not have to pay for a dress they might only wear one time. Operation Scholarship. We offer each school district two annual scholarships for graduating seniors attending community college or trade school. This year we've increased the scholarships to fifteen hundred dollars each. Scholarship information has been shared with all the high schools, applications are due back to us by April first. So please take advantage of that too. And next is Community Outreach. Outreach is our emergency community need fund, if a family is in crisis, there's, we have a little pot of money that we can help them. And next is Funding. Our annual budget is about two hundred thousand dollars. We get that funding from our Home and Chef Tour, so are you familiar with Home and Chef Tour? A little bit. Every year we picked an area in, on the north coast and we asked homeowners if they'll let us borrow their house for a few hours for people to be able to pay us, for them to be able to go through their home. And it's been quite popular and it's a good way for us to raise funds. April twelfth is our next Home and Chef Tour, might want to jot that down. Watch on our website for ticket availability, should be coming out March third. Ticket availability. And it's just a fun time, you get to go through about six houses, each of us has a local chef in it making a little snack for everybody, it's just a fun event. So I hope that you'll support us there. We also get individual and corporate donations and grants from local governments and organizations, we have a bank writer who works with it that helps us. So how you can help us? We're always looking for ways to strengthen our partnership with the district. So what, think about what unmet needs there are that we may be able to step in and help with. I know some families do not have easy access to laundry facilities. And so we've been talking about how can we help with laundry facility, how, we, we give them the clothes and they're not able to launder them. Or it's a real, you know, it's really a difficult thing for them, so that's something we're looking at, but if you have other things that you're noticing that families are having struggles with, please let us know and if we can fit it into one of our programs, we will. You can join us, you can become a volunteer, you can become a donor, you can become a supporter, we'd love to have you involved in Assistance League as Kevin and his wife are. You can also spread the word, tell people about the Home and Chef. Tell people about what we're doing and help us bring in more volunteers, more community support people, more donors. We would really appreciate that, we, we've been here eighteen years and not very many people even know that we're here and what we do, so we're trying to get the word out and so we can grow and help more kids. So thank you for the opportunity to share how the Assistance League supports your students and families. Together we can ensure that every child in Seaside has the support they need to thrive. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just, I've got a question. But I do want to say thank you for all that you do in the whole group, I, I would say that the Assistance League, the, the group of primarily ladies that run that is the most powerful group of, of volunteers of any club I'm aware of in this county, and I'd say by far. When you go to those rooms, you, you kind of have all the right people doing it all for the right reasons, but thank you, it just, I know you make a difference, I know, I know just some of the faces the kids I've gotten to work with over the years, it's just been good for me and great for them too. The sports fees, is there a, is there, is that a school process or is that an Assistant League process, this just came up, somebody asked me the other day, said this had been a comment or a topic of last year that the, the sports fees, that just the participation fees for this particular one, I think was middle school. So is there a process that, or what is the process, I guess I'm asking.
Or to be able to get the fees.
Yeah, to get the fees.
Go through the counselor, the counselor reaches out, yeah, to, we go through the counselors in all the schools. They are our liaison, so the counselor can submit to us for fees for whatever they need and we will take care of it.
Okay, so there's, so just, just request the counselor and they request for you.
Yeah.
And Kevin, the process we go through is each new season of sports, the, a message is sent out in, in a, in a parent newsletter about reaching out and reaching out to our counselors if they need assistance with that.
That's great. Can I make a comment about the counselors?
Sure.
So the counselors are the real heroes here.
Yeah.
They do all the heavy lifting, they identify with some help probably from teachers and school nurses, they identify all the children that qualify to participate in all of our programs and we absolutely could not do this without the help of those counselors who work with our heads of school to make all of that happen, so please recognize your counselors, they're just make, we're here, we look like we're doing all the work, but the counselors, without them, we couldn't do it.
Yeah, they make it, they make it all work.
Any other questions for Judith or comments?
I really appreciate you mentioning laundry facilities because you know, going to the laundromat is expensive.
It is.
And so I love your idea of maybe offering some vouchers or something for that, for us to be able to go and not have that financial hardship of using that.
Yeah, and we are totally open to ideas on how to make that all work, it's, it's a little tricky, but we're working on it. Thank you very much for your time and, and for what you're doing.
Before we move on, it's twenty-four seventeen halftime. Stories ahead, stories. I waited to say that, okay, so next, I know. It's only halftime though, still, that's why there's two halves.
We need you up there.
That's the only way I show, okay, so next we have is a student business, I did.
Sweet. So ASB right now, we're reviewing applications for presidency, oh, I'm not doing that, but presidents are. And once we get the president's going, we're gonna get the rest of the positions filled up and then I'll get to choosing your communications for you guys. So I'm gonna help out, I'm really excited for that. And then we're gonna find out at today in between the boys and the girls game, who won the coin clash. I don't know if I've talked to you guys about the coin clash quite yet, but last year we started it, we were able to do a kind of a competition with Astoria, see who raises the most money to end up putting it all together and donating it to a charity of our choice, and this year we chose, I believe we chose, we chose the harbor in Astoria, so yeah, see, so far Seaside has collected seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. And I believe we're in the lead, I hope we are, Astoria hasn't really contacted us about how much they have, so we're gonna find out tonight, I guess, all of us. And that, that's kind of all I have for ASB so far, hopefully we take that coin clash win.
Is this new or have you done it before?
We did it last year and we were able to win. I think we collected over two thousand six hundred put together, so said in that story, yeah, so about a thousand from Seaside, thousand seven hundred. Pretty cool. And now I'm kind of starting to hear that we're losing again.
Well, that was a little while ago, we could be winning now. Uh, thank you, are you heading out?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate you, yeah, cheer loud, okay.
So loud.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, have a good day, we'll see you next time. Uh, okay, next we have our superintendent's report.
Can you bring that up for us? I have a few things to report on this month. Go next, please.
As you all know, we've had some weather challenges the last, the last couple weeks. So I wanna really thank Chuck Lotion, Chris Peters, our, our maintenance supervisor and our transportation supervisor, they begin, they begin checking the road condition somewhere between three thirty and four thirty in the morning and then, then I get, I get a call and we make a decision based on that information. I did send, what, what you see up here on this slide is information I sent out to families and staff on Parents Square, just to, just to explain our process a little bit. We, we take safety as our number one concern and, and we are looking at areas all the way from Arch Cape up to Colby Lake and, and twenty-six and fifty-three, so that's just a little bit about our process. We have missed a total of five days, we had the four days these last couple weeks and then our, where we had no power. But Tony and I did take the opportunity to count up our instructional hours and we are still within that, so as of right now, we don't need to make up any days, so that always makes people happy. Yes. There's a, there's a formula that we go through to calculate our instructional hours, so just a little update on weather, hope, I'm, I'm not gonna say that we're over it, you should never know, but it's nice for it to warm up. Okay, next slide. We are in the long session for legislative and I wanted to give a couple highlights, Tony and I had an opportunity last week, we were at a school finance conference for a couple days in, in Salem as well as Kate Blakesley was with us. And we had some folks speaking about the legislator and learned that there's over three thousand new bills being introduced. Not all of them related to education, but and it, this year is kind of an all-time high for that, just a couple things and I'll continue to give you legislative updates as we go through this. But you'll see Senate Bill Three, which was actually passed in twenty twenty-three, is, is our new addition to our college and career readiness personal finance course, I've been working with Principal Roberts on that. We have, we have some new programs that we're, we're using on our college and career readiness, but we're still waiting to find out if that needs to be a standalone course or if it can be done through our home and colloquium. So I'll keep you updated on that. Some, some other information, there's a, there's a bill out there to require policy for cell phone bans, we're obviously a little ahead of the game because we started that this fall, but that's moving in the direction statewide. A couple other bills to, to take a look at are some special education. All of our districts in the state of Oregon receive funding for eleven percent cap and there's a cap on that for special education funding. And that has not changed in a long time, so there's a lot of advocacy from schools on being able to raise that cap. So that's another one. Another one to watch, so.
Depended on the number of students that are considered especially, just, just a budget, a little bit of a budget.
Right. So anyway, I'll keep you updated on that. Next slide. We are entering into budget season, Tony and I have began meeting about that, we have three new, actually three new and one returning committee member, so I've been reaching out to them to schedule an in-person meeting to be able to give them a little bit of, of a background, you all have your calendars with April fifteenth as our first meeting up at the secondary school, I'll also be communicating with board members and budget committee members about the budget basics webinar and at our conference last week, we, we heard some new information about how to outreach, how to do some outreach to our stakeholders, so we're excited to implement that. And I think that's it.
I have a question for the funding for special education, and there's been a lot of conversation about that being cut, I mean, what is that looking like for our students?
Yeah, there has been conversations, I'm glad you brought that up about, about federal program, federal grants, so the federal grants that we have is for, are for special education, for our free breakfast and lunch, for Title One, which is for schools with high poverty levels, as well as professional development for staff and migrant education, English language education. And so there, yeah, there's been talk about that, but in order for any of that federal funding to change, they would need to go back to Congress, so we're watching to see what happens. Alright, there we go.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, next up is our Business and Fiscal Services Report, Tony.
Oh, yes, we are, we are good and on track. I just got the timber revenue in fourth February, which will be reflected next month. But it is a hundred thousand dollars more than expected, so it was, it was a good, it was a good month. We've started the budget process, we've put together assumptions and of increases in revenue and expenses. We've had initial meetings with our teams and I've reported the estimate of membership and revenue to the state for twenty-five, twenty-six and the amount is approximately twenty-four point three million for our general fund. And that doesn't include our ending fund out.
Well. And what drives the improvement in revenue?
So it's mostly the increases in taxes and there, there are a couple new builds, especially out and in the northern part of the county, so.
Alright. Thank you, Tony. Any questions for Tony before we move on?
Keep it going. Good luck in that.
Yeah. Here we go, it's go time.
Yeah, it is.
It's go time, okay, next up is our administrative reports. And let's go ahead and start with Julie, since you're right here.
Welcome, officially welcome to Big Ridge, thanks, thanks for being here tonight, I'm gonna have you in our, our little space down here. And we are always doing amazing things down here, really in the throes of testing right now, it's our benchmark window for testing, so that's for our win, what I need, reading intervention and enrichment program and just the benchmark testing for upcoming parent teacher conferences, so we know exactly where our students are, so and we're busy doing that and then Elka state testing will be coming up here soon in the next few weeks and that's our state testing for our kindergarten fifth grade students that are English language learners. If you have that, we have parent teacher conferences right before spring break, which are always really well attended, ours are in person and, and we'll have book fair, so like, if you want to like pretend like you have a business, you could be the cashier. Play store. Our PTO has really did a great job, we just finished up our discount cards. We are, little puppies brought in, close to thirty thousand dollars, that's our biggest fundraiser. Yeah, it's a popular one, plus it's great, we couldn't do it without our local businesses that, you know, are on our discount card and then the community that purchased them, so lots of good things to be able to do with our, our students with field trips and swim lessons and all the things that we're able to provide for them through our PTO, we all, they are, are also helping us out, out with our salmon cam, so every year at fifth grade used to raise salmon, but when we, Mr. Dewar became our steam teacher, he now raises salmon, which is great because our kindergarten fifth grade students get to experience the raising of the salmon in the steam room and so there will be, there is a live twenty-four hour camera. Then we'll release them into our stream here at Civic Ridge when they're ready. And just one final, since you're all here, you can see our little Millman Village here, our kindergarten unit is the community unit and so students go home, they get to pick a, a building, they bring it back to school and they get to share with their class, like why that building is important in the community and so all the people that live up there, they're pretty cute and pretty impressive.
So to view that salmon cam, is it gonna be on the?
We'll probably have a link on the website and probably in my newsletter.
Yeah.
We'll get it out there.
Julie, I'd like to publicly thank you for the tour that you provided for Chris and I a few weeks back, it was just great, so there's, there's so many neat things going on around here, it's.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Where'd you get your t-shirt? Um, Ashley, the old husband makes t-shirts at high school, so.
Uh, let's stay within the same school, let's go back there. Jeremy there, thank you, Jeremy.
Hey, everybody, a couple other additions, we had the mayors of Gearheart Seaside and Cannon Beach come, I think it was last week and they met with our fourth grade classes and did a little Q and A with our fourth grade classes and our student council members gave them a tour of the building as well. So it was nice to see the, the mayors here. Julie touched on swim and district assessment, we're getting near the end of fifth grade starbase and that's been, continues to be and has been an awesome part of our fifth grade year for kids. Mr. Miller is participating in the mini boat program with the Columbia Maritime Museum and they are in the process right now of building their mini boat that they're gonna launch and track and they're doing science and art and physics and math. So that's another great partnership that we have with the Maritime Museum. Last week was National School Counselor Appreciation Week, and so I just want to recognize our counselors, Anna Martinez and Colin Bowden, they do an incredible job for us. They help so much with our, with our everyday work. And Julie talked about the salmon cam, we also have another. And um Julie talked about the salmon cam. We also have another uh camera program. Uh, Tessa Di Martolo, our fifth grade teacher, um is collaborating with another group. And we're gonna install wildlife cams on our trails. Um, and so she's uh working with that um, that grant project with them for the uh for our trails. So excited about that.
That's awesome. Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, Wendy.
I'm gonna, I think I'm the only secondary group that I don't have much to share about high schools, except that it's senior night and class of class. And it's very busy uh up in our building right now. Um, but in middle school, we wrapped up winter week last week uh with our first dance of the year, Valentine's dance. I think we had a hundred and twenty kids come, so pretty good turnout. Um, we are also just wrapped up winter sports um in middle school. Uh, we did have our first, well, it was our second one, um but at the school, our Latino parent night. Uh, last Tuesday, we had, we had over twenty-five families. Our next one is March nineteenth. Um, and so we're hoping to just build on that. Um, we had a cosmic um bowling field trip for sixth graders, wrapping up our bowling uh unit in sixth grade that was supported by our PTO. That was really a huge success. Um, and hopefully will be something that we'll be able to repeat. Um, our eighth grade is going to Finance Park this year. Um, coming up in March, this is our first year. Um, so far the curriculum has been great. Um, and so we're really excited for that. Um, we have two new murals. If you haven't been up into the middle school, one in the seventh grade, in front of the seventh grade bathroom, in the seventh grade uh bathroom hallway, and also then one up in the eighth grade. Um, Hillary Stock came in and helped us create those murals. We had kids really excited and participating in that. Our PTO helped to fund that and it really brightens up our hallways. So if you haven't seen them, come check them out. We do have another one planned for the sixth grade hallway as well. Um, that'll be a little bit more shark themed to welcome our new puppets sharks. I don't know what could we name them? The pup into shark transition. Um, we're also like just, it's wild to think that we're just three weeks left in, in the second term. And uh we're in the midst of Elka testing and and planning for, for spring and all the field trips and things that come for spring. So it's crazy to think that we're already in that time here. I guess. Thank you.
Here we are.
So I'd like to give a shout out to Wendy. Um, at the conference where Tony and I were last week, there was a presentation on Wayfinder, which is the um social emotional learning curriculum we have this year. And she, she was asked to be on a panel uh to present about that. So um she did a great job, did a great job representing Seaside.
Awesome. Thank you, Wendy. Last but not least.
Just a sidebar, when you hear the word Elka, it stands for English Language Proficiency Assessment. And our students who are eligible for ELD services, um, that is a federal requirement that we assess their language proficiency every year to determine whether or not they are eligible for those services. So that's when you hear that word thrown around, that's what it stands for. This is budget season, and this is also the season when um sometimes in school districts across the country, there's a little bit of an uncertainty and uh it can be kind of a hot, it can be kind of a hard time of year across school districts. But also for me recently, I've been reflecting on, even though there may be um differences of minutia or differences of details, the overall commitment of our community to serve our students and to strengthen um community has re, excuse me, really shown through lately. And um I see that in our leadership team meetings. I see that in community meetings. I see that all over the place. And and I see it in the budget. One of the things that's weird about a budget is that if you start looking at it line item by line item, you can absolutely see clearly where we tie our money to our values. And so um I just want to highlight that I feel really blessed to be a part of this school district and this community that really puts its money where its mouth is. So keep those positive thoughts in mind as we move towards a little bit of a challenging season.
For sure. Thank you, Kate. And hi, Jeff. We're right in, right at the tail end of administrative reports. Do you want to add anything or are you prepared? If you're not, it's all.
They mentioned highlights. I just wanna uh I guess talk about one thing that I had the opportunity to go to Portland uh today and participate in the Evans Scholarship uh interview process. So we have a young man, Matt Wonderlick, who was a finalist today. Um, and it's a program we're working at, what we got started at both Gearhart Golf Links and at uh, we'll start at Astoria Golf and Country Club uh this next summer. Um, it's a really incredible program for young people. Uh, it's a caddy program, but through caddying, uh right, learn a lot of life skills that are really important. Uh, and then you know, with, with some academic acumen, become eligible for a essentially a full ride to wherever one of their member schools are. And so hopefully uh in the next week, we'll find out if Madden uh received a full scholarship, room, board tuition. Not, not board, they're working on that, but room, tuition at the University of Oregon for four years. So uh just really cool, six finalists uh in Oregon uh this year. Uh, we had one, a young man from Warrington. So really, really cool program, really awesome opportunity for a lot of kids. It's just uh to reaffirm, to hear a lot of those kids' stories today. And again, not all of them were ours, but to reaffirm that we are doing really great things at public schools that um gives kids an opportunity uh that they otherwise wouldn't have. So.
Alright, thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Okay, next is uh Cannon Beach Academy Reports. Mary Ellen, are you online with us today?
I don't see her unless she's in my pack. I don't think she is.
Well, you do have her re, her director's report as an attachment to, to read it anytime.
Okay, so feel free to read that at your leisure. Union Reports. So the SCA.
Hi, I'm online tonight. Um, let's see, so Seaside Union for teachers. We just wanna say we're feeling a little unsure with the political climate and everything that's being said, but are very happy that we are in Seaside. That's the general, general status of most of our staff. Um, we are um concerned a little bit with challenges to curriculum, but also know that there's protections in place and the policies and that board and how everything's been handled recently has really um given us a lot more faith in, in our policies and we're really happy about that. Um, we're a little worried about teacher retention and we really want to continue our wellness program um to keep our teachers because we know that teachers are a really huge factor with our students um according to all of our training and what we know as well. And we just really want to keep our programs intact and keep all of our teachers right where they are. And just to say thanks to Assistance League and everybody else for all the great work that everybody's been doing. And just, you know, we're, we're happy that we're two, almost two thirds of the way through the school year and um wanna keep going forward. That's about all that I have.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, next.
Nisa is not here, but she said, and she said she didn't have anything to report. Things are going well.
Okay, the OSV, great. Okay, uh, and that, uh, do we have any other reports that need to be put out there? Nope. Okay, next is our public comment section. The meeting will now be open to receive public comment. We value the time and initiative. Members of public take to share their thoughts with the board. The board's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If follow-up is necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do so. Remember that we are all role models for our students. Please share your thoughts respectfully. Should any public comment include, include complaints regarding a personal identifiable staff member? The board chair will direct the speaker to proper administrative processes found in board policy KL, public complaints. Speakers will have three minutes, excuse me, three minutes to express their thoughts. Uh, any public comments today from our group?
We got one online.
We have one online. Okay. Uh, any, anybody here? If not, we'll go to the online. Okay, Cal, go, go to the online.
Hi, all. It's me. It's Nisa Roberts. I live in Gearheart. Um, I just want to share a positive observation I have about the use of the new Board Book um app or software. Um, I think I've attended almost every single school board meeting since two thousand twenty, um almost and, and all virtually. Um, and I'm super impressed by this offering. Um, and I just wanted to share that. I know that technology takes um investment in both time to learn and um use well and also cost uh always. But this is an excellent product. Communication is only as good, um, what, what you're trying to share is only as good as the ways in which people can get it. And this is a super positive addition. So thank you for investing in that.
Uh, thank you, Leslie, for uh getting this up and going. So, but thank you, Nisa, for the wonderful comments.
Help support it.
That's right. Okay, any other public comment before we move on? Okay, if there is none, we will go to our consent agenda. So we'll just need a uh a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I want to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented.
You're good. Yeah, perfect. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Are there any questions? If there are none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, action items. First is disposal of district property, high jump and pole vault pits. Susan, you have any information?
Sure. So um we, uh, anybody who's volunteered at a track meet knows that these items were indefinitely in need of being replaced. So uh we uh we budgeted for that. And um Jeff, what was it, two weeks ago that the new um items were delivered?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so they're in storage with uh, with tracking just around the corner. So as per board policy, in order to uh to dispose of um of other equipment uh that has little or no value, um you'll see that uh Principal Roberts uh put in that request.
Right. So we'll need a motion to accept this.
And I'm too. I'm saying a motion to accept it.
A second. I'll second it. I can do that. A motion's been made and seconded to disposing of the district property, high jump and pole vault pits. Uh, are there any questions? Starting, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carries. Next is the property sale of Classic County Parcel six one zero one five B C tax lot twenty-five hundred.
So at the end of two thousand twenty-four, um uh I brought forward to this board um a desire to um to sell uh tax lot twenty-five hundred. So for some information for uh for everyone, this is a tax lot that is um is near the old high school. And uh it is a uh a lot that's never been used during um the process for selling um, for selling the old high school that uh that piece of property reverts back to the city. And so um unless we use it for educational purposes, um uh that reverts back. Well, in conversations with the city, um we had this, um, we had this piece of property appraised uh and uh that, that report, um, that appraisal report is attached here. It's the second time you, because we showed it to you at the end of two thousand twenty-four. So um uh we uh we're have a community member who would like to purchase that, um, that piece of property. And um so tonight, um, it would be um asking for your approval for uh for me to negotiate the sale of that property for the price listed in this appraisal, which is three hundred and seven thousand dollars.
There's a motion here on your board book. So someone could read that as is, so it's correct.
I moved that the board gives the superintendent the authority to negotiate the sale of property known as Classic County Parcels six one zero one five B C tax lot twenty-five hundred, for a purchase price of not less than the appraised amount of three hundred and seven thousand.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shannon. A motion has been made and seconded to the board. Give the superintendent the authority to negotiate the sale of property known as Classic County Parcel six one zero one five B C tax lot twenty-five hundred for a purchase price of not less than the appraised amount of three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Are there any questions? If there are none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our instructional materials challenge.
All right, word members, you have the uh the book challenge report. So um on uh in our January meeting, we received um two uh book challenges to the uh instructional materials as listed in here. Um, in for, in uh following the school board, uh the school board policy, which is in attached to independent C. Um, we began the process of um of accepting um the paperwork on these challenges. And then in the board policy, uh it states that within ten days of receiving these uh, these challenges, the superintendent will appoint a um, a, a committee to review the challenges and the materials. So um we, we met that uh, that requirement. I worked with um the principals from both buildings to uh have some suggestions of uh of parents to be on this committee who um uh came from a variety of viewpoints. I sent that out to nine parents. Um, a, a couple different times. And I heard that from four who were willing to be on the committee as well as for um of our staff members. Um, and our staff members were, are, were either um language arts uh teachers or uh involved in the library.
That's a question. Is that part of the policy? Who selects, who, who asks to be on the board? Or is that just left to you to figure out? Is that just the process you came up with? Or is that part of the policy?
It's part of the policy.
So like eight members or?
No, the numbers are not.
Or the process to select those?
The process to select it.
It's not in there either.
It's, yes, it's in the policy.
And so it's eight. Okay, I'll have, yeah.
Yep. So um the first meeting was on uh February fifth, um, which was going to be in person, but because we had some weather challenges, it was online. Um, and at that, uh, at that first meeting, as laid out in this report, um, the committee members um uh went through the board policy um as well as a testing that they had read the entire book. And three main um uh questions. So um I'm right now, I'm um, I'm in the board policy, which states that the procedures to be followed by the review committee. Um, they review the administrative regulation. They establish a calendar. And then they review the challenged material considering the theme, concept, vocabulary and illustrations. And there are three questions that they addressed. Number one, the appropriateness of the material for the instructional objectives established for the lessons in which to be used, including its presentation and follow-up. Number two, appro, the appropriateness of the material's level of difficulty. And uh number three, the appropriateness of the material for the age groups with which it was used. So that happened in the first meeting. That meeting was February tenth. And um this was for uh testimonials. Um, so uh folks um had an opportunity um to share testimony. The committee chose three minutes for each person. The committee in the meeting on February fifth also discussed if there were some people that they wanted to invite to learn more from. So that uh the testimonials happened um at that meeting on February tenth. So that uh the testimonials happened um at that meeting on February tenth. And um and then the committee um voted. And the recommendation that you have in in front of you right now is um. So I guess I'm I'm gonna say that the when they voted, they had um. Three options for their recommendations. The first one being continued use of the materials as used with no reservations. Choice number two, restricted or modified use of the material in terms of subject area grade level, et cetera. Or number three, no further use of the material as a part of the regular or support curriculum in the district. So this report that you have in front of you, um it the committee is recommending the first choice. Which is continued use of the materials as used with no reservations. And that um and that was a unanimous vote by the committee. So I present this um uh this this report to you. Um uh so tonight, uh the board needs to decide if they're gonna accept this report. Um if uh or if you are contrary to this report. Then the board would need to um establish reasons for that in writing and provide that to um to the community. So that's what you're voting on tonight. I do wanna take a moment to say um thank you, um thank you to parents. Um you're your child's biggest advocate. Um and I wanna thank all um all the committee members and Kate Laxley who who ran that. And I felt like um our our policy outlined the process well. Um and I also think of from listening to everybody, it gives us um a good opportunity to improve our practices as well. And um and those internal practices, which um Principal Roberts and I have been talking about. Um I think uh that we uh we can improve our communication with parents. And I think we can clarify our process um for alternative texts as well. So um I look forward to continuing uh those conversations and I um. I feel like the process went well. So I uh give it to I give it to the board to um. To make a motion and uh in the way that you choose and to discuss.
And I'll make a motion.
Good question. You can, if it's a clarifying question, you can ask it. It's your opinion. We need a motion. Give your opinion.
We can, we can talk after the motion.
So that's.
I move, I move to approve the advisory committee's challenge request recommendation as submitted.
I second there's some additional information that you provided as well.
Yeah. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the advisory committee's challenge request recommendation to have submitted. Are there any questions or comments?
Uh I was reading through this report, which is very extensive, so thank you for that. Uh it talks about how the students have the freedom to opt out of the books. So I assume that's. Going to be part of the process or something to be like that.
Yeah, yeah, we um uh from talking to the teachers and um and Principal Roberts, we have, we've, we've always had that option. But I think um as as I said earlier, I think we can improve on clarifying that process.
Okay.
Along the same lines, and I think that's right on I. This thing kinda got turned around sideways at the meeting, I thought. Uh we had. We went from an an issue that there's materials covered out a lot in class was objectionable to a parent. And next thing you know, we got a book banned and people come in, they don't have children in the district, talking about why it's so important not to have a book banned. Um I'm, I I I think the material was inappropriate personally. That's my own opinion, however. It I don't think it was ever a book ban. I think the issue is that parents do need to have a say. And I think that's you're right on, Susan, is that we've gotta make sure that maybe opt in. So if 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 the teacher said, hey, there's this materials and some of this may be challenging or if there's a rating system would be nice, but. So if you would like, if you would like your your student to go ahead and just be part of our normal curriculum, fine. If you would like to avoid materials that might deal with, I don't know what that proper thing is, but there's opt in or an opt out. Opt out is less used because it's not understood. Opt in is much more clear because every has to choose. And I think opting in as a parent, this is a parent decision, a parent opinion. And even though the committee said this, I'm sure there are a lot of parents don't agree. But the the thing about that is that there's the opt in, opt out, it solves that issue. And again, I don't think it was ever necessarily a book ban. It was more um a parent would like to have say what their children are exposed to, and I think the opt in would be a good solution.
I I would be, oh, sorry, Susan. I was just gonna say, I would be careful with an opt in option, because now you're, you know, do you do this in math too? Well, this is too challenging for me, so I'm not gonna opt into that math. Or this is, you know what I mean? So I feel like when they set a curriculum, the you know, the teachers follow the standards, they set the curriculum, the district sets it. And then, yeah, they definitely have an opt out issue, the opt out option. I absolutely agree with that. Um you know, and I just wanted to say that I think this, this was moved on swiftly, you know, like it wasn't. Oh, we'll wait to take care of it. You know, I I appreciate Susan and Kate and all the parents and teachers that were on these committees and they, you got together quickly. You know, you took really some time to really go through it, made sure everybody read the book. Um so I just wanna say thank you for that. Um and you know, I think everyone kinda did their job. But I definitely think there can be an issue. I think the opt in can, there can be some slippery slope.
I think that'll be something for our administrators and the teachers to. To in the future move forward with that, you know, that's, I don't think that's a, that's not necessarily board level. Uh action for us. It's our, it's we've, we've, we have, we have these wonderful educated individuals here at our schools that run our schools. That they're, they're gonna, I know, make, make the correct steps to alleviate this problem in the future. Um you know, and it is, it is a parent's job to be uh the advocate for your child. So you know, hoping that more parents will pay attention to the syllabus that they sign at the beginning of the year saying, oh yeah, I see what's happening here. And instead of, as opposed to being, you know, reactive, we're proactive in the situation.
Most parents are gonna read the book list that's gonna happen. So there needs to be some quick way to say, this is R rated, this is PG. Whatever. I don't know, there's gotta be some way, but if if you put in that material, the last book, it's X rated, not R. So it's, it's pretty salacious stuff. But it's, it is what it is. But we need to have some, some measure saying, what, what am I approving? What am I uh opting in? Instead, here's the list of books I'll read this year, read them. And I I don't know, just I that, this is again, not my place. We'll just keep going.
The internet, the internet's a wild place. At least kids are reading.
Grateful for the committee. I'm grateful for the parents who spoke up and advocating for their students. There were, you know, multiple sides to all of this and everybody did it graciously and respectfully, and I really appreciate that. And I'm, and I believe in advocating for your children. Um I do agree that in just to put my thought out there, I do agree that um. More openness to parents, understanding what the information is. Don't always, you know, a lot of parents are busy. They don't always know what they're up, they can opt out of. You know, and so having that um transparency, um and easy transparency for parents as. A support as we are partnering here together to educate your kids. Um I just think that I'm glad it's mentioned, I'm glad it's seen, and I do think that um the transparency. It's a great start for us to move forward.
Any other comments? There are none. Let me read the motion. So a motion has been made. To approve the advisory committee's challenge request recommendation as submitted. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. So it's either a yes or a no. Let's start, Shannon.
Yes.
Kevin?
Epstein? Epstein.
You're abstaining, okay. Yes. Cat, you say yes or he's done? He's not voting.
Oh, okay, um. Yeah, I'll say yes.
Yeah, yeah, yes, under, yes. That is four. That's a, that is.
Yeah.
Four, so.
Four yeas.
Four, four yeas, okay. That means motion is approved.
Make the request that when folks are speaking or voting, just speak up a little bit. But I sometimes I'm having a hard time hearing.
Got it.
And um that probably means folks at home are too.
You got it.
Once again, I wanna thank everybody for the process and uh for uh for your thoughts. Alright.
Okay, next we have our board reflections and announcements. Somebody have any announcement before we go into executive session?
Oh, reflection. Are we gonna do that?
Yeah, right now you can reflect, haven't you? This is your time, this is your time.
Assistance League, that what they came in and did was a few minutes to kinda share what's going on, but. I know for a fact, there's tens of thousands of hours that go into these ladies that do it for free with their spare time. Because it makes difference. I just think Assistance League deserves a round of applause. I wish we'd all given the standing probation. But uh they do a fantastic job. So thank you to Assist.
Anybody else? I wanna thank the board for uh uh being here while I was gone on my vacation, which was absolutely wonderful when I was over in Europe. Uh seeing my oldest daughter, she goes to school at University of Nottingham, so if anybody ever gets a chance to go over there, do it. A lot of old stuff. Lot of old stuff, lot of old stuff to look at. Um. Uh but if there's nothing else to come before the board in this meeting, we will now go into executive session. To consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent as per O R S one nine two point six six zero. Section two subsection A, review, promotionary certified staff, superintendent evaluation check in. So we'll have a. Yes, we'll have a five minute recess before we reconvene in the executive session and probably some room somewhere else. Okay. There we go. Yeah, let's. Okay, so let's get us back into regular session. So I will. Executive session, adjourned our executive session and reconvene in our regular session. If anyone would like to make the motion.
Yeah, I moved to approve resolution number two, authorizing the superintendent to offer employment contracts to licensed staff as listed. In a second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number two, authorizing the superintendent. To offer employment contracts to licensed staff as listed. Are there any questions? If there are none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight?
Who will be the greeter next month?
Oh, yes. Lose.
I can't.
You can't?
I never.
Cat was weird. What day is the, what day is it? Maybe fifteen, fourteen? Okay, I I can greet on the eighteenth. If nobody else can.
Yeah, and I might, that is kinda depending on my my back situation.
Oh, that's good. So I'll go ahead and greet unless someone else steps up.
I can probably, I'll do, I'll, how about I'll do it. Ryan, and then if for some reason I can't, I'll let you know.
Okay, Shannon, that sounds great.
And it and and suggesting agenda items or new business for next meetings, um this is appropriate time or?
Well, yeah, yeah, I think so.
I think, I think it would, uh we've got the authorization to sell the property. I think that's, you know, that's great. But when that happens, this one time event, I'd like to chat as a board as to how that, that what that one time could be used. For one time needs. And there's a few ideas I have.
Okay.
And and w- once that negotiation process is done, then I, then I'll bring it back to the board for final approval.
Okay, and that, okay. And then that may be a good time to talk about that.
You're talking about the.
How to use the money.
Maybe taking it not directly to the general fund, but maybe set it as a, you know, it's, you know, a restrictive fund. So it is restricted for one time things. This is, we don't, this'll be a one time, it shouldn't become a part of our budget.
I got an idea.
Okay, well, let's uh let's go ahead and we'll, we'll work on that as an agenda item when the time comes. How does that sound?
Sounds great. Just, just, yeah. I saw it on there and I'm interested and I I fully support it, so it's good.
Yeah, totally, awesome. Alright, anything else to come before the board? If there is not, anything else?